Thank you everybody for coming tonight. It's six thirty, so we'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Wilson, did we have confirmation of notice to the meeting?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, and we have a form, and I would like to ask if someone could do, make a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the agenda?
Uh-huh.
Thank you. The motion passes. I just want to welcome everybody tonight. I appreciate you taking the time to be here, and hopefully we'll have just a good productive meeting and no executive session, so you'll be able to see our faces the whole time, well, most of our faces the whole time. And I just want to say a personal thank you. I know we're kind of about to round out the end of the year, and I just want to say a personal thank you to every single district employee that we have, because I know that everyone has put forth their best this year, and I know it's been a tough year, but I think it's going to end up being a very good year, and I appreciate everything that you've done to bring your best every day for our students, and I know I speak for the whole board when I say that, so I appreciate it very much. And hopefully we'll just be able to finish the year strong here in a few more weeks, so. And if we could do the pledge of allegiance and bubble, do you mind leading us enough?
Sure. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, Ms. Wilson, did we have anyone for public participation?
We did not.
Okay, we'll keep moving right along. Alright, the next we have, we need to approve our minutes from the March twenty-second meeting. If we could get a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rawl. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay, the motion's passed. And now we will have Ms. Brandon Addy with our Hickory Tavern School report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. Dr. Thomas, Chairman Little, school board members, Lawrence fifty-five cabinet, and all other stakeholders. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to present to you tonight the things I am most proud of about Hickory Tavern School. This presentation will focus on three areas: academic recovery, focus on the positive, and focus on engagement. The first task for academic recovery was and still is to strengthen literacy at Hickory Tavern School. We use LEAK Week data to determine student needs, and academic interventionists focused on the lowest kindergarten and first grade students, providing them with daily small group or individual instruction in reading. They used the Project Read program with these tier-three students. Tier-three students in second and third grade received intervention, and still receive intervention, from our K through third grade instructional coach and other available certified staff. We had some extra bodies that were certified, and we put them to work. Additional Fountas and Pennell resources have been purchased, along with numerous books to supplement classroom libraries. The picture you see there is where we purchased the books from the South Carolina Junior Book Award winners and the Children's Book Award winners. We purchased copies for each class, fifth grade through eighth grade. In March, I discovered a strategy called First Chapter Friday. I have recorded videos of myself reading the first chapter of books, some new, some older favorites, to entice students to read. This has been extremely popular with students and very rewarding for me. I love having students email me or stop me in the hall to talk about the books that I have read with them. In conjunction with Read Across America Week, Hickory Tavern hosted a Read-a-Thon fundraiser. We raised over eighteen hundred dollars for our library. Our librarian, Ms. Claudia John, has also issued school-wide reading logs to boost participation in the thirty-for-thirty time. There are various incentives for completing the logs, including tokens for the book vending machine that Dr. Thomas purchased for us. Our district becoming one-to-one has improved parent involvement in literacy. Students use their devices to read ebooks and to complete activities in various programs like ABC Mouse, Reading Eggs, and Study Island. Several parents have commented that this makes it easier for them. These programs are very parent-friendly, and they're motivating for students. While we know research says the best thing to do is to sit with a child and read, we all know that busy families sometimes don't make that doable every night, so this is a supplement to that. All ages enjoy the Wish Tree book from the One District One book. They loved especially to have the book read to them by the masked reader. You see here, this is Mr. Campbell with the lion emoji. The younger students and the older loved guessing who the reader was for the day. We believe that early intervention is the foundation for success in mathematics as well. Kindergarten and first grade students, who are considered high-risk according to their Fast Bridge scores, receive math intervention within the regular classroom from the academic interventionist. A few students have received pull-out intervention from our instructional coaches. We have purchased extra math manipulatives for the classroom and for those manipulatives to go home with students on the e-learning days. Again, the one-to-one devices have allowed students to not only practice their math skills with these programs, but practice their math fluency as well. Personalized learning has allowed teachers to plan lessons according to specific student needs. Here's an example of a sixth-grade science choice board. Students were asked to complete any three activities in a row. The second example here is a choice board from eighth-grade science for sun, asteroids, comets, meteors, and space technology. You can see this one has much more detail, and students have must-do activities based on their scores on the pre-test, and then there are choice activities as well within these choice boards. We have book clubs where students have a choice of the book that they read. Eighth-grade ELA is working on a genre study playlist. They have a choice of one of six genres, and the essential question for this playlist is what determines the meaning of the text? The book, the reader, or a combination of the two? So there's lots of choices within this playlist for seventh-grade ELA. Blended learning occurs in many classrooms as well. The most popular strategy is station rotation. The difference between this and traditional station activities is that at least one station has a technology component, and one station has teacher-led instruction. In all of these examples of small groups, we base them on students' level of ability and their interest. Our intention is to have multi-tiered Systems of Support MTSS meetings each month. However, due to COVID, we were limited to the months of October, November, February, and March. At these meetings, we discuss students who are not yet reaching their grade level potential and what those reasons might be. This year, we have been more intentional with the Now What phase. After the February meeting, we restructured interventions in grades K through three and invited more students to the Academic Recovery Tutoring Program. This is a picture of Ms. Mel Gillespie providing math intervention in a five-K classroom. In this particular room, the rest of the class was working on combinations within ten, but this sweet little girl needed some help with her combinations of five firsts before she could move on. In our MTSS meetings, if behavior issues were brought to light, counseling sessions were set up with guidance or our mental health counselor. With the changes of the schedule for the second semester, we reestablished academy time for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. This thirty-minute time was set aside for academic recovery and for social-emotional learning activities. Ms. Robinson and Ms. Moore, our instructional coach, assigned students tasks in Study Island. These assignments are tailored to the students' needs, whether they're assignments below grade level, on grade level, and/or above grade level to push them forward. Grades from these assignments are entered into the student's grade book for Semester One in order to try to boost their averages, where they may have fell short in that first semester because of the difficulty during the e-learning days. If a student earns a seventy or above on these assignments, they receive a blue ribbon in the Study Island system. Blue ribbon winners' names are entered into a drawing. Each Friday, five student names are drawn, and winners receive a snack and a soda as an incentive for their efforts if their name is drawn. Academic Recovery Tutoring has made a big impact on our students. Here are some pictures. Some students work on their computers during Academic Recovery Tutoring, and then some receive one-on-one instruction, like you see here with Ms. Kate Thomas. The sole focus is homework and/or remediation, and it ends at four-thirty. So parents are more inclined to have their students participate with an earlier dismissal time. Okay, here is our spring math data, and you can see from this, the pointer only shows up on the one on the back, so I'm just going to kind of talk through it. Academic Recovery Tutoring takes place Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday each week, and we have about seventy to eighty students each day. We think that this has had a positive impact on our growth this year. We know we have more work to do in certain areas, such as third grade and eighth grade math. You can see there. This data that you see is the percentage of students above the fiftieth percentile. If they're fiftieth percentile and up, that means they are approaching the target, so we identify them as the bubble kids, and they just need a little extra boost to get them to where they need to be. However, we do have areas to celebrate as well. Specifically, fourth grade reading, which is sixty percent of students are at or above the fiftieth percentile, and fifth grade math, where we have sixty-five percent at or above the fiftieth percentile. This next graph shows you the spring math data for students in grades one through five who have attended Academic Recovery Tutoring consistently. You can see here, the red columns show you the typical growth for reading for a school year. So in first grade, the typical growth is fourteen points, but the average for our students who attended Academic Recovery Tutoring is sixteen point five points growth. And you can see there, the same applies for second and third, fourth and fifth grade. Those who came receive or earn more growth on their math test. And then the green shows typical growth for a year in math map, and then the yellow shows you the actual average growth. So you can see for first grade, first graders are expected to grow about fifteen points, but the average for our first graders who attended Academic Recovery Tutoring is twenty-three point five. So we are really pleased with that data. Okay, middle grades data for Academic Recovery Tutoring. Students have focused on remediation skills in reading, fact fluency, and math, along with improving their Semester One averages with time to do those recovery assignments through Study Island. Averages for the first semester have come up for those who are participating, and also Semester Two averages have been on the rise as a result of getting that one-on-one instruction from teachers. Due to the uncertainty of the world in the past year, we placed a greater emphasis on social-emotional needs. Through MTSS meetings, we've identified those needs of specific students. Middle school students have been assigned a staff mentor. If they were one of the students who didn't log on during e-learning or we felt like there was a significant need, then they were assigned to one of the administrators, counselors, or one of our lead teachers that builds very good rapport with students. Sometimes students just need someone who cares and someone that'll listen. Interventions have been put in place by counselors and mental health counselors as well. We've utilized program resources from Wings, NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, Beyond Abuse, and Ms. Moore has created a social-emotional learning calendar for fourth grade through eighth grade teachers to provide them with daily activities. With Beyond Abuse, that's a company out of Greenwood that comes, and they presented to the teachers, and then Andrea, who is Ms. Parsons, presented that information to all the students through classroom guidance. We've also had some classroom discussions during academy using strategies such as the rose, the thorn, and the bud, and bucket fillers. Like, how do you fill someone else's bucket with positive things? Okay, the look-up-at-the-sky day that we did last week, teachers did a great job tying this to literacy. So this is our fifth grade class, Ms. Connie Lewis. Read the book, I Am Peace, A Book of Mindfulness by Susan Birday. Afterwards, students were given a few minutes to read quietly or draw in order to be mindful. So the look-up-at-the-sky day gave us a chance to take time out of our stress-filled day to just look up and admire the beauty that surrounds us. Eighth grade tied this day to their science curriculum and their sun unit, and they put on their solar eclipse glasses that Ms. Vanister had stored away from when we had the eclipse a few years ago, and they looked at the sun along with the other things. Okay, the next segment is a focus on the positive. With this being a tough year, we've placed special emphasis on the positive. Ms. Moore created positive office referrals for all of our students. Teachers give students referrals for being kind, working hard, and other positive things. Student names are called during morning announcements. They receive their referral, a prize bag, get their picture taken, and sign the Positive Office Referral Board, which is right outside my office. You can see there, we have a second grader, and then we have two eighth graders signing it, so it is school-wide. Okay, we purchased a banner to be the eye and kind, to promote kindness. And we also celebrate autism awareness during the month of April to promote acceptance of our differences. So each student was given a puzzle piece to write a little message or sign their name, and they hung them on a banner that hung outside the main office. So you can see the puzzle pieces all there, and then these are some of our students who indeed do have autism. So we light it up blue each year for autism at Hickory Tavern. Hickory Tavern went all out for the One District One book thanks to our incredible librarian Claudia John and our instructional coach Brandy Moore. They planned teacher raffles and trivia questions to promote participation. Second grade created a wish tree in the hallway that you can see pictured here, and students placed their wishes on this real live tree. Red, who was the main character in the Wish Tree book, we named this tree Red, and students went out during their library time and hung wishes on this tree. Ms. John and Ms. Moore, along with Ms. Robinson, organized these hearts that you see here. All stakeholders, staff, students, and parents were given these hearts to give them the opportunity to send messages of thanks and appreciation to staff during the week of Valentine's Day. PTA organized a someone special soda sale so students and parents could send a treat to their students or to staff members. Seventh grade organized a pizza party as an incentive to get students to complete their homework for the third nine weeks. The incentive for the fourth nine weeks is ice cream. Hickory Tavern has tremendous support during Christmas time, but to supplement, the tradition is that we have candy cane sales and a coin war. So you can see the top picture, buckets are placed outside of the cafeteria, and students drop their coins in to their favorite teacher. And the favorite teacher who wins gets to wear the cheeseburger costume. So the kids have fun with this idea. They want their teacher to be the one to look silly walking around in the cheeseburger. We've also had multiple spirit weeks, both when we were in person and online, just to kind of boost our spirits. The last segment is focus on engagement. These photos right here are from Heather Smith's four-K class. She read the book to them, What the Sun Sees, and then you can see the students are outside looking up at what the sun sees, and then they came in and drew a picture and then wrote their sentences. So that's pretty good for four-K. I'm pretty impressed with that. In five-K, Ms. Lisa Bukosik's class used Unifix cubes to measure Ms. Willis, who's one of our academic interventionists. Ms. Wendy Bryant uses math choice boards in her kindergarten class. Students choose an activity to work on independently after the main lesson, and then the teacher, the assistant, and the interventions go around and help. This is a little fella making combinations of ten using his Unifix cubes, and then he's coloring them. And this little fella is making geometric shapes with Play-Doh. Primary Montessori, during Montessori Education Week, made cards for essential workers. Ms. Tracy Hudson had them make cards for law enforcement, firefighters, healthcare workers, administration, custodians, and our cafeteria staff. Nothing brightens your day better than little four- and five-year-olds bringing you a sweet little card. First grade identified classifying and eating two and three D shapes, and then they had fun eating their shapes. This is Ms. Coe's class. In second grade, Ms. Angela Nelson's class tied together their science and writing standards for the week. They were shown a video about Cain's arcade, where a boy in their age created an entire arcade from using cardboard boxes and other materials commonly found at home. They were encouraged to create anything they wanted, as long as it was considered an arcade game, and then they wrote a how-to manual for how to play their arcade game. In third grade, they created a slideshow using Google Slides of their research for natural disasters and presented those to their classmates. Ms. Lainey Kraft's Raise One class adopted a dairy calf named Timber. They learned about the dairy farming industry, how to tend to cattle. They wrote about their research and read stories around a campfire. You can see their little campfire here. Fourth grade students created planet projects as they finished up their unit on the solar system. The students say that they learned best through projects. Fifth graders created a black history museum along their hallway. They did research on their important person and then created a likeness of their important person. Here we have Condoleezza Rice, Ruby Bridges, and Jackie Robinson. This is the Raise Two class, taught by Ms. Lisa Gans, and she had them create bar graphs using Lucky Charms on St. Patrick's Day. Sixth grade students created catapults. Class winners will be competing this Friday at the STEM competition against other middle schools in Lawrence fifty-five and Lawrence fifty-six. Seventh graders in ELA dissected articles about the human body system to tie in with their science class. They dressed up like surgeons and then annotated their informational text. You can see the teacher here is standing beside the skeleton that they borrowed from the science teachers. They also used their knowledge of taxes and gratuities to simulate a real-life situation at Ms. Byrne's Math Cafe. Then they got to eat some treats too. And finally, we have eighth grade. Eighth grade students created silhouettes about themselves. You can see that they have learned about themselves, what they aspire to be when they grow up, what things they like. So it's just a different spin on the All About Me project. And it had them practicing their computer skills when they got back to school in September. Then these next pictures are Ms. Vanister's science class, and they are dissecting calf eyeballs so they can practice the scientific method. And my final slide is collaboration with Lawrence High School's FFA program. Last week, FFA students came to share pine tree seeds with our first and second graders. They planted their seeds in a cup with some potting soil, and then they got instructions on what they need to do next when it starts to sprout. FFA students plan to come to Hickory Tavern for the next few weeks to work with our Twenty-First Century students on various agriculture and horticulture activities. So a little plug here, we would love to have our own FFA class at Hickory Tavern, if it's possible. Us in Gray Court, we think we have the student interest to make that happen. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Addy. I do want to say I love the First Chapter Friday.
Yes ma'am.
I know that was back at the gate. That one just stuck with me through everything else you were talking about.
Yes.
I feel like you guys are having fun at Hickory Tavern.
I read the first chapter of a graphic novel, and one of our troublesome non-reader fifth graders came up and showed me the book and showed me that he was already like halfway through it, and it just touched my heart so much. I love it.
Yeah, I love that.
Well worth the time. Yes ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we have the Waterloo Elementary Report with Mr. Pharrell Thomas.
Well, I wasn't nervous until after Brandy had came up, and I thought I was fine. And if I was a defense attorney, I would just look at my client and say, "You going to jail." That was good. That was real good. It's my pleasure and honor to be here tonight, serving as the Waterloo Elementary School principal and to give our school report. Greetings to all board members, Dr. Thomas, Chairman Little. And we are gonna, won't be here long. I'm gonna be like, "Oh, Baptist preacher, I won't hold you long." But we wanted to give a snapshot. I have two. I don't know why they're sitting. I'm Charlie, and here's the angels. I'm surrounded with women all day, and so I brought two with me, so, yes, thank you. But we're gonna do this. I believe in shared leadership, and so we're doing this together. We have different parts, but here's a snapshot of Waterloo Elementary School. Waterloo Elementary School, as we affectionately call it, the Lou. This is just the overview. And let's see here, I think Mr. Finley said this would start. Alright, this is a video.
Welcome to Waterloo Elementary School, where teachers display their superpowers, and students are ren-credible. Every day, we welcome our two-hundred-and-fifty-plus students into an environment that is safe, nurturing, and fun. nurturing, and fun. As we celebrate success in and out of the classroom, we recognize that teachers and their self-care is essential to their great effectiveness. This year, we've had the opportunity to do yoga together. Every first Monday of the month is Happy Hour Monday, where treats are supplied for teachers and Dean Days for the entire staff. We've had caller number 10 days where we give away gift cards and prizes. And we even gave away two $100 cash prizes to two staff members on the 100th day of school. Along with our monthly Spotlight Teacher and Staff of the Month, we find numerous ways to recognize and celebrate the hard work and efforts of our incredible, ren-credible staff here at WES. Our virtual announcements and virtual quarterly awards have been great success for us this year. As we recognize students for their hard work academically and for being a great Waterloo citizen, emphasizing and addressing the social and emotional aspects of learning, we have established club days here at Waterloo Elementary School. Club Day has been a great hit with our students and teachers as students get to choose different clubs like the Cooking Club, Video Gaming Club, Coding and Robotics Club, Golf, Chess Club, Photography Club, and the Board Game Club. Community and community partnerships are critical to the success of schools. We are thankful for the local businesses, churches, and the Michelin Corporation for their donations of time and money as we continue to show hashtag Lou Love and do it the Waterloo way. I am privileged, grateful, and thankful to be the principal of Waterloo Elementary School. I am blessed with a great staff, great students, and great parents, along with being in a community where we can make a difference. It is our motto that we say each and every day that we can, we will, and we are Waterloo Elementary School and we are ren-credible.
All right, that's, that's the highlight of some of the things we've done this year. And again, it's uh, it's really fun to do what I do each and every day. And so I, I mean, I, I don't take it for granted. Um, we have a good time when we're at school. And that, and that's one of the things that we want to talk about, school culture, climate, and connections. Um, first, it's our numbers. Right now, currently, we're at 242. Here's the numbers by grade level. Uh, 20 certified teachers. Our staff's about 24, so we're about 44, 45 uh teachers and staff in the building. Uh, one of the biggest, big things that we have uh continues to focus on, based on what Ms. Abercrombie has left behind, is continue to make those uh community partnerships and connections. Uh, local churches, when we gave away the $100 to uh two teachers on the 100th day of school, Ms. Downs was a lucky winner of that. They had to be caller number 10 uh to the front office. And it was, I was like playing radio DJ, oh, you're caller number one. Hang up. You can shoot. And uh, so that was fun, but we got, that was all donated through the community. Uh, as a matter of fact, as I sent out letters, I got more than what I'd asked for. And we were able to do some other things for our student recognition. So our local businesses, uh Michelin, Donors Choose, Bikers Against Bullying, ZF. ZF helped us with uh 20 turkeys um during Thanksgiving that we helped with uh 20 families. Dollar General uh helps supply Christmas for students and families that, that are, are our schools. So all of this is part of our connection and, and building culture and the climate within our building. Uh, I'm gonna let Ms. Downs talk about our academic recovery and the things that we're doing at Waterloo.
Hi, I'm Ms. Downs. I am the instructional coach at Waterloo. I've been there almost four years now. How's that?
Better.
Thank you. So we're doing great things at Waterloo if you haven't heard. I'll start with our school-based professional development. We have been offering that at Waterloo this year, and Mr. Thomas has offered some professional development. I have, and we've also had teachers offering, um, offering it what they know and what they're good at. And so our teachers have been learning from teachers, and we think that's been very effective. We have focused on quality instruction, priority and support standards, technology, and planning in the professional development sessions. We have an academic interventionist at Waterloo, and she works with students who are struggling in reading and math. And at present, she is serving 35 students in grades kindergarten through second. She works with them in small groups. She works with some one-on-one, but she also supports the teachers and helps them with their intervention that they offer their tier-two students in the classroom. We have professional learning communities at Waterloo, and I lead those. We call them PLCs, and we meet two times a month. We meet to talk about data. We look at test scores, results. We look at their classroom assessments. We look at the reading behaviors that their students show when they read. And we talk about um areas that are of deficit, and we talk about strategies. We make um teaching and learning goals. And we also work on pre and post-assessments so that when we, when we decide which students we really need to target, um, we also agree on the strategies we're gonna use to try to see growth and um improve their performance academically. We started something this uh spring called Learning Walks. And the three of us choose teachers. One at a time, they go with us into classrooms. And we've been focusing on watching student engagement. We've also been looking for quality instruction. So we go in these classrooms and um these teachers, who normally don't get to observe their peers, get to go in. And when we finish, we go in the conference room and we talk about what we saw. And we agree on feedback. And we make this, um, this is aligned to our teaching standards, the 4.0 state standards uh for teachers. And we look at those standards and we decide on some areas that we believe the teacher did really well. So we offer them a couple of areas that we say, uh, we want them to continue. So we call those reinforcements. And then we agree on a couple of areas that they could do a little better in, and we call that refinement. So we offer that feedback to those teachers so that they can improve their instruction. Because we know that as we improve instruction and we have quality instruction, we will have higher levels of learning. We have the 21st Century Program, which is after school. It is um Monday through Thursdays. We are serving 20 students right now at Waterloo, and we are serving grades two through five. And each day, they have rotations of math, reading, and technology. This year, we purchased a computer program called MobiMax. And MobiMax is a wonderful intervention tool, although we do let all students use it. And they work with fact fluency in math. They work on vocabulary. They work on language and foundations of reading, and they can also work in science and social studies. We encourage the use of MobiMax during the day in the classroom, during the 21st Century Program, during our tutoring program after school, and the students can also access it from home. I'm real excited to share what fourth grade's doing. We have two second-year teachers. They are a great team. And a couple of months ago, I sat down with them to talk about what they have left to teach in math. So we decided we needed to pace it out so that they get everything taught by the end of the year. As we were talking about what they had left and, and pacing it, they decided they wanted to do some ability grouping. They felt like they could cover it and, and maybe even meet the needs of students a little bit better if they could pre-assess and then put students in like a high-low grouping. Um, so every day for math, they split according to the groups they formed. Now, they did this um for each unit. So for geometry, it was just a two-week unit. They uh would switch classes sort of uh according to that pre-assessment, and they would teach them. Um, they, they would say two weeks is, is our time that it's going to take. For the lower group, that teacher would try different strategies to make sure she was reaching those students. The teacher who had the higher group, she goes through the material, teaches it all, but she finds that she has extra time to go deeper and to do a little enrichment. So it's really been working well for them. And again, I'm, I'm super excited because I feel like they are um just second-year teachers, but they are doing some really good things. And last but not least, our after-school tutoring, we call it ART. That's our recovery tutoring. We started it in December. And we started with our Cycle One. And then we reformed those groups for a Cycle Two. And we would like to say that in Cycle One and Two, we have served 48 students. We start our Cycle Three on Monday, and so for the month of May, we will serve an additional 25 students. That's about 30% of Waterloo's population of our school. So we are real pleased to have the um, the teachers who are wanting to, to be there for our students and the students who are showing up consistently to um try to make some growth. So with that being said, I want to show you just a little data from our after-school students that we tutor. All right. I will talk you through it. So um, the first column shows the grade level, first through fifth. The second column is their map reading growth. This is their average growth. Um, and we're measuring that growth from fall to spring. The last column is the average text level growth. So if we look at first grade, Ms. Addy was showing a little bit of this data. Um, we know that a typ- typical growth could be anywhere from 12 to 16 points per student. And on average, with our tutoring students, we've seen the 16.6 point growth. Let's look at text levels. Typically, for a first grader, you would see about a six-level growth. So we're seeing an average of three right now with these students. We have to remember that we do have eight weeks, just under eight weeks of instruction left. But we also need to recognize that these were our kindergartners who just last spring were thrown into virtual learning while they were still trying to strengthen their reading foundational skills. So we still are celebrating the growth we see in these first-grade students. In second through fifth grade, I'll just point out, you typically are looking for a three-text level growth in that last column. So in our second-grade students, we saw a 17.5-point average growth in map reading. And we saw four text levels of the average growth for our second-grade students. And again, we, we really want to celebrate that. Our third, fourth, and fifth-grade students in map, you can see their average growth as well as their average text level growth. And we definitely have some areas to keep working in. But I do want to stress, we have just under eight weeks of instruction, and the teachers at Waterloo are still teaching, and the students at Waterloo are still learning.
I think we had to convert this from a Google Slide to PowerPoint, and I think it highlighted some of the stuff. So that's why, Dr. Thomas, I shared a copy with this with you, so you can probably put that up. Uh, next, Coach Fay is gonna talk about uh School Improvement Council, SIC, and, and some of the things that they've done incorporated with some of the things you saw in the video as well.
As Mr. Thomas said, my name is Coach Fay, Suzanne Fay. Um, I serve many responsibilities at our school. We're, we're small rural school. I am the PE teacher, the administrative assistant, and um archery coach. And the SIC had elected, nominated and elected me to be the chair for TUS. So I'm serving my second year as chairperson for the School Improvement Council. Um, our job, we're setting goals to improve literacy through partnerships with stakeholders and engaging students in multifaceted approach. Um, we, we looked at this year especially at our literacy and the social-emotional. And um, we tried making those connections through some of the activities that the school did. Um, for the literacy pieces, um, the drop everything and read, we just did recently. Uh, we just took 10 minutes to stop everything that we were doing, just grab a book and, and enjoy the reading aspect of literacy. We also participated fully in the One District, One Book, uh, The Wish Tree by Catherine Applegate. And the teachers, uh, the picture is in the bottom there. That's uh our 4K, 5K kids who made the connections with the book and went out um along, around the surroundings of the school and actually brought back artifacts and from that related to the, the book. And they also wrote about what they collected outside. Uh, we also participated in our poetry reading with Dr. Thomas. It was a virtual visit with our superintendent. We had some students get to participate in that. The National Look Up at the Sky Day, the teachers encouraged the students to bring um out writing materials to not just enjoy the beautiful weather we had that day and admire the sc- the sky in all its glory, but also to write about what they observed. And making the observation that it does not just visual, but what they heard, what they smelled, what they um observed fully out there. So our younger students drew pictures and wrote some, some of the words that they saw, and others brought out their writing journals. We also have the book vending machine. It's been a huge success. All the teachers are given five coins, even related arts. There, um, there's a specific protocol that they, um, they have to achieve in order to receive the co- coin. And then they are encouraged to go purchase a book with that coin. And this is the kid's choice, so they, they go on. Um, the different levels of the vending machine actually provide the, the correct level for the student. And they're taught how to purp- how to- And they're taught how to purposefully select those books. And the kids love going to the vending machine during the month of March in conjunction with our college basketball. And this is the first time I've really got to know Mr. Thomas in his sports love. And he said March Madness, that's his thing. So, we really made those connections with March Madness and the reading. We, that's Waterloo Elementary, celebrating reading. We do a lot of dress-up at Waterloo. The kids love it. Mr. Thomas is fully engaged in all that. And the students, we did our, it wasn't Dr. Seuss. Dr. Seuss's birthday happened to fall within that Read Across America Week. And we also participate Thirty for Thirty, our March Madness Book Challenge, and our Parent Literacy Night, which was all virtual. And I do want to remind you that all of our SIC meetings, our monthly SIC meetings, are also virtual, which does create a little bit of a challenge, but it's also kind of nice too to be in your own environment. And it does lend a little bit more time for others to be involved. Our social-emotional learning, once again, that, you know, when you're smiling, you're loving life. And when the kids are loving life, they come to school. And they have, we've noticed that we're trying to improve attitudes and motivations through positive experiences. And there have been many, many experiences this year that have been positive. One of them being the puppet show through our guidance department and that board, that social-emotional board that Ms. Terri Ivy unfortunately at mid-year went ahead and did her full retirement, left us, but had started the year with her puppet show and that wonderful board that we can all go back to in all the pieces of what social-emotional learning is. We also have our club fun days, club days for third through fifth. The fun days are for kindergarten and first, just to go out and have fun. The third through fifth grade, the teachers create their own, whatever they're interested in. That cooking club, we have a teacher, Ms. Diane Bear, who's virtual this year. She has done the cooking twice. She loves it. And the way she has given the kids the opportunity to engage in that, we thought, how are you going to do it? And she made it happen and made it work, even though she doesn't even have those students want face-to-face. She made those wonderful connections. We had the coding and robotics club, the video gaming, golf, which Callaway Clubs. We had eight sets of Callaway Clubs through Donors Choose. And then, two more full sets were provided by the local church. We had a photography club and a chess club. So, we give a wide variety of things that the students choose to be in. We have student recognition to remind students that we do believe in them. And Mr. Thomas, he not only has awards, but then has student of the month lunches with them. And they feel very privileged to go to the conference room and have their own special area to have lunch. We also have the teacher recognition, our spotlight teachers, and the other various things that he throws in there at the last minute. We don't know what to expect, but it's very positive and we do like being recognized. We do have a competitive archery team for fourth and fifth graders. And then, our staff, we participated in some yoga, which we actually relaxed so much, a couple of us fell asleep during one of the yogas.
Thank you.
And again, I didn't, actually, they actually put this last slide in here this morning. We did this, so older places we can go. That's one of the things I read each, each day when we had to read Across America. And I do that. One of the biggest things that we have done this year that have allowed us to create that culture and that connection and with community is that I go virtual every morning to do announcements. Because we still have students that are virtual and parents that are virtual. We want them to still feel as if they're a part of Waterloo Elementary School. And so, I do the pledge of allegiance, I do all the announcements. And then, every Friday, I actually, just something similar. And I promise, Dr. Thomas, I didn't steal it from you, but I'm not opposed to taking great ideas like I did with Ms. Addy. I wrote down a lot of stuff that, so there was. Good teachers take, they borrow from other teachers. But I do a weekly video of Facebook Live and I go on live and I, parents interact because they can type in questions and ask questions and we do that. So, that's one of the things that I wanted to do. And I have a huge social media presence that we do with Facebook, Twitter. We have a YouTube channel where we post our awards day. And then, we also put that on our website. And so, every day, I'm posting. I was like, one day, I got a text and I was like, it was like seven o'clock. Because I have shared my text, my cellphone number to parents and so they use it. They text me, um, you didn't post any pictures today, what's going on? And so, I mean, so they're really engaged as well. And next week, we will celebrate our teachers with our Teacher Appreciation/Spirit Week. Each day, there's a theme. And I've already warned teachers and parents and the kids, they better come with it because I am ordering new costumes. So, each day is a theme that the teachers, if they dress up, they're not required. But if they do, their names will go in a drawing. And we're going to try to give away two fifty-dollar gift cards to various places throughout next week. And maybe call it number ten, call it number five, who knows? But in order to go, be, in order to be a part of that, you must dress up. So, we have that that's going on next week in addition to some of the things that I've asked the community to help with our teachers to celebrate that. So, we're very proud of what we've done thus far. We yet to have work to do, as Ms. Downs showed you. Some of my data shows that we are still having, need to move the needle a little further. And we are equipped and ready to do that and take on that challenge each and every day because we can, we will, and we are Waterloo Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. And it sounds to me like you guys are having just as much fun as Hickory Tavern. But I am more, I'm really intrigued about your, where'd it go, your happy hour Monday? That sounds intriguing, so thank you.
You have to come by on Monday, first Monday of the month.
First Monday of the month.
I'm not responsible for bury act bills or denim bills because they eat a lot of wheat.
Well, thank you. All right, and we'll turn it over now to Dr. Thomas for the superintendent's report.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Trustees, good evening. I'm very excited to be able to share our outstanding students and staff accomplishments and some updates on some wonderful things that are happening around our district. I would like to say thank you to Ms. Addy, Mr. Thomas, Ms. Downs, and Coach Fay for those school reports as well. On Monday, April the 12th, as some of the schools have shared, we celebrated Dear Day throughout the school district. Dear stands for Drop Everything and Read. So, the national celebration of reading is designed to remind people of all ages to make reading a priority, to make it a priority activity in our lives on a daily basis. So, the school's dedicated ten minutes. I asked that they just set aside ten minutes, putting aside all other distractions, to enjoy reading. And families were also encouraged to take at least thirty minutes to put aside all distractions and to just enjoy reading together. National Look Up at the Sky Day was on April 14th. This was another day that we wanted to celebrate as well. It was created to motivate people to see the world from a different perspective than we normally do and just appreciate the beauty of nature. So, as we know, the world goes at breakneck speeds. We often rush through our weeks and our weekends without taking time to really just pause and appreciate the simple things. So, the teachers created opportunities for students to do just that and to also just take a moment to take part in activities that were tied to our standards. So, they tied this activity to ELA, art, science, math, and social-emotional learning. We use the hashtag LookUpAtTheSkyDayL55. So, we were very excited about that to really just focus on social-emotional learning, which has been a focus this year with everything that we have gone through with the pandemic. But as always, we want instruction and academics to be at the forefront as well. So, I thank you for, all the schools for participating in that activity. Earth Day was celebrated on April 22nd. The theme for this year, Restore Our Earth. The purpose of Earth Day is to inspire all of us to take action toward the protection of the environment. Our teachers created many opportunities for our students to learn about and actively participate in Earth Day. As you all have heard previously, we're very excited about our One District, One Book initiative for the school year. So, we're looking at our culminating activity with a virtual visit from the author of Wish Tree, Catherine Applegate. This will be on April the 28th. There will be three sessions, one for K-2 at 12:30, grades three through five at 1:15, and grades six through eight at 2:00. The students and staff will also wrap up by having another wishing day and placing their wishes on a wish tree. We have already held two STEM Saturdays, one on April the 17th and one on April the 24th. We've averaged around eighty participants. Who, this is actually held at Lawrence High School and bus transportation is provided as well as breakfast, snack, and lunch. So, our students do attend school on Saturdays. Our final session is scheduled for May the first. STEM Saturday events provide an opportunity for students to learn through hands-on experiences as they use science, technology, engineering, and mathematics skills. Our application process for the 2021-2022 Lawrence 55 Virtual Academy is now underway and it will continue through April the 30th. Students must be enrolled in Lawrence 55 in order to submit an application. And a separate application must be submitted for each student if they are from the same household. At this time, we have received seventy-eight applications. These include twenty-one elementary students, twenty-two middle school students, and thirty-five high school students. The 2021-2022 Lawrence 55 Virtual Academy will be different from the county-wide program that is currently in place for the school year. While the Lawrence County Virtual Academy has served many students throughout both District 55 and District 56 this year, our 2021-2022 program is being developed to specifically meet the needs of students in Lawrence County School District 55. Among the changes being made to the 2021-2022 program for students in Lawrence 55 is the requirement for committing to the virtual option for the entire school year. The county-wide program implemented for the current school year required families to make a commitment of a full semester. However, the 2021-2022 program will require a commitment for the entire school year. This will provide more continuity to students and enable teachers to better facilitate the online learning experience. Acceptance into the Lawrence 55 Virtual Academy program will be contingent upon multiple factors, including the student's current academic progress and performance, medical factors, and attendance history. We want students to be enrolled in the learning option that best meets their needs. If a student did not experience success in this year's virtual option, that will also be a factor in determining placement for the coming school year. The number of eligible students who apply for enrollment will determine how the district proceeds with the program. We also have some updates with our standards and curriculum. The 2019 social studies standards are fully implemented this school year. There will be field testing in U.S. history. And of course, this spring, and our new 2021 Science College and Career Ready standards are scheduled for final approval in June of 2021. During the 2021-2022 school year, the State Department will provide professional development for the new standards. During, in the meantime, districts will continue teaching the 2014 standards. It's hard to believe that we are in the final nine weeks of the school year. As we continue with the final nine weeks, we are looking at our summer programming. There will be a presentation at the May School Board Meeting with more specifics about our summer programs. But as families are beginning to make plans for summer, just wanted to provide just a little bit of information regarding some of the plans that we do have at this time. Our CERTEP, Child Early Reading and Development Education Program, will be, will take place at each elementary school. Our 4K students who will enroll for the 2021-2022 school year and this year's 4K students, which will be our rising 5K students, will attend for sixteen days from eight until 2:30, Monday through Thursday. We will also have our summer reading camp. These will, this is for our third-grade students who are below the grade level. And as far as our sites, we will have at Hickory Tavern School. And this will be for students from Hickory Tavern, Waterloo Elementary, and Gray Court Owens students. We will also have this at Lawrence Elementary School, which would be for Lawrence Elementary, E.B. Morse, and Ford Elementary students. We will also have summer PE this year, again, for our rising ninth-grade students. And this will take place at Lawrence District High School. The dates for our summer programs, June the 28th through July 1st, so week one. Week two, July the 12th through the 15th. Week three, July 19th through the 22nd. Week four, July 26th through the 29th. And then, we will have our summer PE makeup on August the 2nd through the 5th. Information about the State Department of Education Parent Opinion Survey was provided with report cards on April the 14th. So, parents are encouraged to complete the online survey by May the 21st. Students in the highest grade at each level for elementary fifth, middle eighth, and then, the high school would be the eleventh graders will also have the opportunity to participate in the student opinion survey. Staff will also have the opportunity as well to participate in the teacher opinion survey. So, we do have that that will be coming up as well with getting some feedback from our students, parents, and teachers. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. So, I'm pleased to report that the district will continue to host virtual sessions of parent academy for the remainder of the school year. Our next session is scheduled for May the 13th from 6:00 until 7:00. The topic will be the challenges and gifts of being highly sensitive. Additional sessions are scheduled for May the 20th and May 27th. There's no cost to participate in these virtual sessions. And those who wish to participate may register online at our website. As a reminder, all of our safety protocols are still in place. I would like to reiterate that the mask mandate was not a district decision. It is a mandate by the State Superintendent, the State Department of Education for all public schools in South Carolina. I did correspond with the State Superintendent of Education, Molly Spearman, on April the 2nd to ask if she anticipated any changes to the face masks requirements in the near future. A response was received from the Department of Education on April the 6th stating that at this time, Superintendent Spearman does not plan to lift the mask mandate in schools. Therefore, based on the information that we have available at this point in time, there are no intentions of lightening up on or lifting the mask mandates at this time. As you all are aware, things are constantly evolving. If there are any changes to any of the safety protocols, we will let you all know as soon as that information is available. We encourage all parents to contact the district office or school administrators if they should have any specific questions. Dr. Penland will provide additional information regarding COVID-19 updates as well as safety protocol updates during his report in just a few minutes. The Student Nutrition Department has received two grants in the amount of $2,000 each from Gen Youth, Frito Lay, and the Dairy Alliance. These funds are for the COVID-19 Emergency School Meal Delivery Fund and Fund- These funds are for the COVID-19 Emergency School Meal Delivery Fund, and funding is a direct result of the Madden 2021 Campbell's Chunky Million Meals Challenge presented by Target and powered by CLS Sports. Lawrence Elementary School and Lawrence District 55 High School each received a $2,000 grant. These funds will be used to help purchase equipment and supplies for the school cafeterias at these two schools. I'm also very proud and pleased to announce that we had schools to place in the We Peck Academic Challenge Bowl. Congratulations to Sanders Middle School for coming in second place for Division 2. Also, congratulations to Hickory Tavern Middle for coming in third place in Division 2. We're very proud of these students and schools for their accomplishments and their dedication to academics. We're also very proud of our students who were selected for Boy State program, and this is a unique way for young men to learn about the American system of government and politics by participating in a mock governmental system. Palmetto Boy State is the top program in the country thanks to the unique learning environment. In addition to participating in a mock government system, Boy Staters have the unique opportunity to explore potential career paths through our different schools, including the Performance Arts School, Criminal Justice Academy, and Law School. We have three young men who were selected as delegates for this summer's program, Jackson Edwards, Jaden McGowan, and Hiron Varner. Congratulations to these individuals. We also have three alternates who were selected, Caleb Bouchelon, Cole Lawson, and Preston Mann. So we're very proud of these young men for these accomplishments. The Palmetto Girl State is a one-week leadership and citizenship training program that is created to educate outstanding high school students about state and local government and citizenship. Girls attending Palmetto State experience governmental procedure by stimulating political campaigns, elections, and the political process. They also learn about the principles of citizenship and public service from guest speakers, expert panels, and staff members. The delegates, who are rising seniors in high school, are selected for the program based on their leadership skills and involvement they have shown in their schools and as well as their communities. As citizens of Palmetto Girl State, the delegates are divided into groups of about 30 called cities, and they create local governments. They also get to devise political party platforms, and they ultimately select a senate, a House of Representatives, and state officers. The young ladies selected from Lawrence High School as delegates are Anna Jenkins and Anna Taylor. Congratulations to these young ladies for being selected. Lawrence District High School, Jamarius Evans, has been selected as a South Carolina Teaching Fellows participant. The mission of this program is to recruit talented high school seniors into the teaching profession and to help them develop leadership qualities. Each year, the program provides fellowships for up to 200 high school seniors who have exhibited high academic achievement, a history of service to their school and community, and a desire to teach in South Carolina. Congratulations, congratulations to Jamarius Evans. We also have staff who are doing some outstanding things as well. Erin Hahn, LDHS Sports Medicine and Unified PE teacher, received a 2021 Champion Award from Special Olympics South Carolina. This was presented to Ms. Hahn in recognition of her dedication and service in promoting the mission of Special Olympics South Carolina. Also, Rob Sheffield, LDHS Physics and Project Lead the Way teacher, wrestling and football coach, and robotics advisor, is serving as the 2020-2021 Ambassador for the Step Up Physics Program. This program is committed to the goal of inspiring young women to pursue physics through training and supported implementation of the Step Up Curriculum in classrooms across the country. We're also very excited about Ms. Brenda Choice from Waterloo Elementary School as the cafeteria manager, who's won the distinction of being named the SNASC Manager of the Year. As you're aware, our student nutrition staff have made sure that students have received meals all throughout the pandemic, and we're so proud of Ms. Brenda Choice, and we're very thankful for her dedication and her service to our students in Lawrence 55. The Spring 2021 Edition of South Carolina Association of School Librarians Messenger featured Lawrence Middle School Librarian Kathy Butler. Not only was the school's library featured on the cover, but Ms. Butler also had an article published on page 8 of the magazine. The South Carolina Association of Middle Level Education is offering virtual lesson planning labs during the next few weeks on Thursday evenings. Emily Verden, 6th grade ELA teacher at Hickory Tavern School, has been selected to facilitate a breakout session for ELA teachers across the state as part of this event. We are very proud for all of these individuals and how they are representing Lawrence County School District 55. It was also an honor to recognize our April Spirit of 55 Award winners. These individuals are nominated by their principals, and then a team scores the recommendation forms to determine the Spirit of 55 Award winners without any name being disclosed. So congratulations to our certified staff recipient, Ms. Samantha Bond, instructional coach at Gray Court Owens School. And also, congratulations to the support staff recipient, Mr. Austin Darling, career development facilitator, also at Gray Court Owens School. Congratulations to these two individuals, and we thank them for their, all of their hard work. I would also like to take this opportunity to say congratulations to Mr. Ed Murray on being named Superintendent of Lopez Island School District in Lopez Island, Washington, effective July the 1st. We're very thankful to Mr. Murray for his service and contributions to Lawrence County School District 55 for the past five years. He's very, he was very instrumental in our strategic planning process. Mr. Murray will continue to perform his duties in Lawrence 55 through mid-May, and then he will begin his transition as he and his family will begin the process to move to Washington State and transition to his new role of superintendent. So congratulations, Mr. Murray, and we wish you all the best in all your future endeavors. At this time, I would like to show a video to highlight some of the great things happening Earth Day is celebrated on April the 22nd every year. The theme for this year is Restore Our Earth. The day aims to raise awareness about climate change and global warming. The purpose of Earth Day is to inspire all of us to take action toward the protection of the environment. Earth Day is recognized as the largest civic event in the world. It focuses on immediate action needed to tackle environmental issues such as industrial pollution, oil spills, and toxic waste disposal. Our teachers created many opportunities for our students to learn about Earth Day and to also actively participate.
Hi, I'm Lisa Severin. I'm from the Teaching and Learning Department in Lawrence School District 55. I'm excited to say that this is our third annual STEM Saturday for grades 2 through 8. STEM is an acronym that stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. Our focus this spring is biomedical engineering and computer science coding using Lego, Rob Robots, and Ozabots. It is important to note that future jobs require some type of STEM focus. In Lawrence 55, we provide students with other STEM opportunities, including the high school robotics team, computer science classes, coding opportunities, and engineering at Elementary, which is from the National Center for Technology Literacy. If you would like more information on STEM in Lawrence 55, please feel free to contact
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
For our District 55 Certified Staff Winner for this month.
Oh, thank you.
So we're very excited and very deserving.
Thank you very much.
For asking you, we have certificates and also a beauty card.
Thank you.
So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, thank you for all your hard work Samantha.
Thank you for allowing me to be part of it. I'm really, I'm surprised, but I'm thankful very much. I wasn't expecting that.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Well, congratulations for our District 55 Support Staff Winner for this month. So we're very excited and very well deserved, so congratulations on all you do.
I really appreciate that.
So this is for you, you have a certificate and a beauty card.
Very cool. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Austin, for all you do.
Okay, so we'll.
All right.
My name's Anna Jenkins. I'm in 11th grade, and I'm excited to go to Girl State to learn new leadership skills.
My name's Anna Taylor. I'm in 11th grade, and I'm excited to attend Girl State to meet new people.
We're excited to represent Lawrence High School.
Hey, I'm Jackson Edwards. I'm a junior here at Lawrence District 55 High School, and I'm just excited to meet new people at Boy State.
I am Hiron Varner. I am a junior here at Lawrence 55 High School, and I am most excited with Boy State with being able to grow in friendships with others and be able to learn more about politics.
My name's Jaden McGowan. I'm in 11th grade, and I'm excited to meet new people.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jamarius Evans, and I am so honored to be selected as a South Carolina Teaching Fellows. I would like to take this time to say thank you to Ms. Martin for her advice and guidance to teach cadet. I'm so thankful for her and how she impacted my life, and I cannot wait to become a future
Hi, I'm Kathy Butler, and I've been the librarian here at Lawrence Middle School. I believe this is my 22nd year here, and I think I have the best job here at school because I can do pretty much anything, work with any classes, any subject, I can bring it all into the library. The newest thing are the Hestrucks. We love playing with things, but incorporating toys into our lessons. So this year, we have the Hestrucks. We started playing with Rubik's cubes a few years ago, doing mosaics, and bringing that into science classes, and doing lots of STEM here in the library. So come on in the library and see what we have. Of course, we have books too, lots of books. That's my favorite. I was really pleased to see our library on the cover of the Schasm Messenger, this edition. It's always good to highlight what's going on here in Lawrence District 55 and in Lawrence Middle School in particular, and see all the good things that we're doing here.
Being a man at this school, Waterloo Elementary, it means a lot. It's thinking about the job that's more important about feeding hungry kids that don't have anything to eat. When they leave here, at the end of the day, we know somebody going home with a full stomach, that they won't be worried about what they're going to eat or anything. So as long as a child got something to eat, they can concentrate on doing their homework and focus on passing their grades so they can move on to a better life and education. So my thing is for food service, a very important job because we don't feed the kids. The teachers can't teach them, and that's the important thing. A nutritious meal for all kids. Some we won't be able to reach, but during this pandemic, we do the best that we can. So we just, you know, just pray and things will get better for all our kids to be back at school so we can feed them.
I've been working with the school since for 20 years. I come to work every day to make sure these kids get something. I haven't missed a day since 2012, nine years, and that's because my mom passed. Other than that, I'm here to make sure my kids, Waterloo, get fed, and they're going to get fed good and go home with full bellies.
I just want to thank all those that was involved in me getting this award of being Manager of the Year for the state of South Carolina. Just knowing South Carolina by itself was just a blow. I thought it would be just for District 55, but when my district manager told me about the state, that's a blessing. I want to thank my district manager, Superintendent Dr. Thomas, and all those that was hands in this. So I thank God first above all, because if not for him, I wouldn't be able to do what
We have many reasons to be proud in Lawrence 55. I would now like to take this opportunity to thank all of the district employees of Lawrence 55 for all they do every day to meet the needs of our students, to the best of their abilities in a situation that we've really not had any control over. This year is definitely unlike any other year that we have experienced, and I'm very thankful for all of the hard work of all of the staff, the teachers, and administrators during this unprecedented year. Things continue to evolve, and our staff continue to make changes and be flexible and be positive, and I'm very appreciative, appreciative of all of this. and I'm very appreciative of all of their hard work throughout this process. Because we do have a lack of substitutes, many of our teachers, our staff, and even our administrators are having to pick up extra duties and cover classes. This creates even more work that they're having to do after school, at home, and on the weekends. So I'm truly grateful to our staff for being flexible, for being positive, and for all of their hard work and their understanding. At this time, I would like to recommend to the board an appreciation bonus for all employees in the amount of $850. This bonus will serve as a small token to show every employee just how much we appreciate all they do each day. If approved, these funds would be given on May the 5th.
May I ask a question? Does that include grant controls as well, even though they're paid child grants?
I was just curious if that included grant employees as well. I wasn't sure.
Yes, ma'am. It would include all of our employees.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. So the request that Dr. Thomas has put forth to us needs board action, so I want to ask if someone would like to make a motion for this employee bonus.
I'll make a motion that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to award the financial money to employ the District 55.
Second.
Thank you. All right, now we'll vote. All those in favor? Right, and any opposed? We, the motion carries, so we have approved the $850 bonus. Thank you, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you. I would like to express a sincere thank you to the board for the approval of this bonus. Thank you. And at this time, I would like to ask Dr. Brink to provide information on accreditation and federal programs.
Good evening. How would I turn this down? We have had a lot of good news. I will try to keep it brief and just kind of keep us rolling. I appreciate the time that you all are offering me tonight to give you just a very brief overview of the start of our accreditation process as we look to our continuous improvement cycle this year. We have had a year like none other, so we are going to take what we have learned and continue to roll with it. And so as we go and enter into this accreditation, just kind of as a brief overview, last year, we received an all-clear rating from the State Department of Education as they monitor our ratings every year. And so we are now in a situation where we can pursue accreditation using an outside agency. We have been using Advanced Ed, which is now called Cognia, it's the same company. And so that is the company that we would like to continue to move forward with. And so this will give us an opportunity to use some of our strategic plans that we have already in place and begin to investigate where we can continue to make some long-term goals as we move through this process. We, of course, will use all of the great documents that we already have as a general guide. The strategic plan document that we produced, the 2019-2023 document, the strategic plan that we have written and that we update yearly for the State Department of Education, our student achievement data, which is ongoing. We've had, of course, some gaps in it, but we've got some really good data that we are beginning to fill those gaps in and help us in our progress. Our principals have shared with you some of the ways that they're using data. Our ongoing feedback, whether that's formal or informal through the State Department, through, Dr. Thomas sends out great temperature checks, you know, so we have lots of different types of feedback and stakeholder surveys. And then as we continue and start to pick back up with our State Department stakeholder feedback surveys, all of those will sort of be very good ways for us to formulate a continuous improvement process and evaluate where we are as we move through accreditation. Through the accreditation process, we'll use strategic thinking, strategy mapping to move us through these different processes. But you'll hear words like envisioning, planning, implementing, and evaluating as we as we continue to just make sure that our continuous progress in the district has a very seamless transition. And what we're looking for is that sustainability, that embeddedness in that process. And so we'll begin with that envisioning phase this spring, the envisioning and the planning, so that we can make sure that we are checking on our current reality. And as we know, these have been, the last couple of years have been very interesting about, and that helps us to readdress our current reality and what our future looks like in Lawrence 55 moving forward. So that as we go through to the implementing phase and we put forth any processes and procedures, any updates to current processes and procedures that we can evaluate and put into place, ways that we can evaluate how we're doing, guidelines to make sure that we're making progress on those envisioning and planning stages that we have done it to create that in continuous improvement cycle so that even after our accreditation visit, the official visit that we have in the fall, that we have got a really good sustainable way to continuously improve in Lawrence 55. We will use the Advanced Ed performance standards that Cognia lays out. They are in three domains, and you all are going to hear a lot more about these, but this is just your sort of quick overview. We'll call it the Reader's Digest condensed version tonight. So we'll be looking at leadership capacity, learning capacity, and resource capacity. Within these, we will elicit stakeholder feedback on each one of these. Each one of these has domains under them, and we will be rating ourselves, and then they will come in and they'll rate us on how we're doing and give us really good feedback on what they see and in areas where we are excelling and in areas where we can continually improve. Finally, and I know this is a little bit small, and I apologize, but this is our general timeline. Beginning tonight with this brief presentation, this is just the board approval for continuing to seek that outside accreditation with Cognia, our continuous improvement meetings that will go on this spring, and going through that envisioning and that planning stage as we finish out this spring of our school year. The summer, we'll continue with some of those continuous improvement team meetings in different venues, and we'll work on that planning and implementing phase, and then we will revise or continue to revise our strategic plan. And then in the fall, we will have a virtual visit from Cognia. They have decided to continue to do virtual visits. We are waiting to hear back on when they will visit. We, Dr. Thomas, sent in the information of our choices to visit, but sometime between October and late November. And so as soon as I get those dates, but it is a four-day virtual visit, so I'm interested to see how that will go. But I will keep you updated on when that date will be, and so we will plan for and have that accreditation visit. And I look forward to the feedback that they will give us as we continue to move through this. And then, of course, next year and for the three to five years that this is written, we will continue to implement the things that we have put there. So that really is the very quick version of what accreditation processes we will begin and be implementing through the spring, the summer, the fall, and then the foreseeable future. So I appreciate the opportunity to just give you a very brief overview as we go into requesting board action to pursue accreditation tonight.
So there's no actual date?
Not yet. We are waiting to hear back from them. So our first choice is the first week in October. We really hope that we get our first choice, but if not, our second choice is the last week in October, and then our third choice is the last week in November into December.
How often does this come around?
Every five years.
Every five years.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is when Mary Fortune did it with the Advanced Ed?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Will they talk to all the school board members? I know they have before.
Yes, ma'am. We will. I need your approval to continue forward, and then you will definitely hear a lot more about this, and we look forward to that. I'm excited about that. Yes, ma'am.
Since you had the amounts here, since you're taking questions, you had the amounts down. What do you project the amounts to be for this time?
Are you talking, are we doing federal programs?
Right. I mean, yeah, the federal programs.
Do we want to do board, do you want me to do board action on this one first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
That's okay.
I was just looking at it all together.
I got you.
Yeah, I looked at it all together, so that's why I was asking that.
No problem.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move forward. Ms. Blair, if we move forward with this one, and then we'll come back to your question.
And then I'll be glad to answer that.
Okay. So per Dr. Brink's request, we need a motion to approve the accreditation process.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we move to approve the pursuing accreditation.
We have a second. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Okay, all those in favor? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you. That's approved, and we'll move forward.
Great. And now we'll move on to the federal programs you did receive in your board packet. The approval for federal authorization to file for federal programs. Each year, a formal request is made to the school board to authorize me as the Director of Federal Programs, Accountability and Professional Development, the superintendent and/or her designee to file on behalf of the school board to formally file all of our 2021-2022 school applications for all of our federal programs. Our allocated amounts for federal programs are still in the works. That's why I gave you the numbers from this year.
So they haven't come in at all? Because I was thinking some of, I talked to some people.
As a matter of fact, this morning, I got some projections for Title I and Title II. Those are not set in stone yet. They did want to give us some projections, so I don't want to say those publicly yet until they release the funds. But that gives you a general guideline there, and they are close to the same. But right now, all I have are just the projections for Title I and Title II. The rest of them have not been released yet. So that, I didn't know I was going to have that until first thing this morning when they released.
How much input did you get from the principals in the Title I schools?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I know I've heard, well, some of them have said from time to time that they don't really manage it, but, you know, when they make requests, they may or may not be given that, so that's a grave concern to me. So I'm just wondering how much input do, will come from, or how much input does come from?
Each school has an allocation of their Title I based on their People's in Poverty Index, and we rank our schools based on that. So those schools with a higher index of poverty receive a larger amount of funds, and we'll rank them that way. And so each school, we have our, we have a district allocation, and then each school has their own allocation for Title I funds. And we are actually required to have stakeholder input on Title I, and we are just about to do that with our principals as we are running out of, you know, time to do some things. But even today, we met as the teaching and learning, we started some of that stakeholder feedback, and we were talking about specifically about the use of Title I funds. And my next group are our principals and our assistant principals and instructional coaches.
So they do help create the plan?
Yes, ma'am, they do. And that is something that we have talked to at length because that is something that they have to work on at their school. Do I have any other questions about federal funds?
Do we ever have any monies left over? And if so, where does that go? I mean?
Very infrequently.
But we have had, so I'm just wondering, you know?
We generally, we try to expand. I have a great, we have a great grants expend, lady in finance, Ms. Deborah Jones, and she and I try to make sure very, we check and expand and let the schools know if they have any additional funds that they need to expand. And they're usually pretty good about making sure to buy necessary supplies, or we sometimes will move some of our funding if we don't have, if we need to buy some supplies, but it's in a field trip account. They allow us to move that through.
Because I know there are certain things you can and cannot do, just because working with the state and certain federal funds, you can and cannot do some things with, so I'm just curious.
And we ran into that. So oftentimes, you know, at the end of last year when we couldn't travel, you know, we made some amendments to move that so that we could supply some additional instructional funds.
All of our schools currently have an after-school program?
They are.
Yeah, all of them?
Yes, ma'am. The 21st century is only at our elementary and middle school, but all of our schools up until the, up through the high school have our after-school academic recovery. And as a matter of fact, we are pursuing a grant for the high school. We hope to have some information on that, but we are pursuing one. Do I have any other questions?
I just want to know the amount. That's all.
That's great. I'm happy to answer.
Okay, if there's no more questions, if we, Dr. Brink has brought forth for us to authorize to file for federal programs, if we could get a motion for that.
Can I ask one more question? I just saw a little note to myself. Just, okay, like, for example, I don't know, is Ms. Tumbleton still with us? Because she was, was she part of that program in, I saw, 0.5 Full-Time Employee Guidance Mentor? Is she still in that capacity?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so some of those names, I guess, will still continue on in those?
Yes, ma'am, and then we'll reevaluate when we get those allocations. We'll reevaluate. Again, those are the, that's what we use this school year, and then we'll reevaluate when we get those allocations from the federal government. We can continue those programs.
Okay. Thank you.
All set. Thank you. Okay, if we could get a motion for Dr. Brink, please?
So I'll make a motion that the board authorize the superintendent and her or her designee, there's my word, I tripped up on, to file for federal programs for the 2021 and 22 school year.
Thank you. All those in favor? All right, it's unanimous. The motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Brink.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Who made the second on that?
Uh, trustee Rawl.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Dr. Brink. At this time, Dr. Pillen will come and share information regarding COVID-19 updates and safety protocols.
Good evening. I only have 12 slides that last about 10 minutes each, so we should get out of here in a couple hours. A couple of things I did want to give you an update on would be some of our COVID numbers. We have, as of today, Mr. Murray updated these data points to show that we have five student positives, one staff positive, 43 student quarantine, and five staff quarantine. I do want to give you kind of a rundown over the past couple of months where we have our data in the system. We have, as we came back from our January e-learning time, we came back where we were having 47, 44 positives on our staff and students for several days there. We did finally dip down. Our lowest numbers were on March 3rd, where we had 48 total staff and student positive quarantine, where only 15 of those were positive. But you can see that our quarantine numbers were very low. But those two red lines is where you can see we had our biggest spikes throughout the last couple of months, where we had a total of 261 in the middle of February, and then we also had another spike here right before spring break where we had 229, with 184 of those being quarantined, and some of those were scattered through several classes or exposures in a few different schools. Looking at our DEHEC report currently, we are in the current medium rating, and that is combined through our incident rate of 198.5, so we were barely medium for the incident rate at 200. That goes to high. The trend in incident rate is low because our numbers are continually going down across the county right now, and our percent positive is at 7.2, so that does give us an overall rating of a medium whenever you look at DEHEC's community spread and recent disease activity. If you look at our seven-day moving average, you can also see the spikes that we kind of mentioned in February and in early April, how those numbers were a little bit higher at those times. You can see where our dip is right before the April, kind of that mid-March day. That was when we were running about five to 10 active cases in Lawrence per day. And so you can also see how that related to our school system. You can see how the spikes were at the beginning of the school, whenever we started with e-learning, and then when we went e-learning at the end of December at a couple of our schools, and then returned in January with the high numbers. Couple of things about the CDC and the updates that they have provided. They did push out an update at the end of February, first part of March, that did revise some of their physical distancing recommendations, that they recommended that those go down to three feet whenever you're looking at classrooms. However, they did state that the correct and consistent use of mask was critical to reducing the spread. So whenever they were looking at the correct, consistent use, they were talking about not dipping the mask down over time, sitting there all day, wearing it correctly, having it fitting properly. So they talked about the correct and consistent use whenever we're looking at masks and trying to enforce that in our schools. They did also provide some clarification in that ventilation is a component of the strategies to clean and maintain healthy facilities. That is one thing that we're addressing in our current ESER funds, that we are now have a plan submitted to the state to also provide air purifiers and some updated heating and cooling systems in those. and some updated heating and cooling systems in those areas that may not have proper ventilation. They did also remove the recommendation of physical barriers, but they did not remove, in the next slide that I'll talk about, the need for physical barriers whenever you're looking at quarantining students. So they just kind of took that out, but it's not, they dis kind of recommend, but they do not physically recommend them, but they don't kind of say that they're not necessary. Clarified the role of community transmission. So whenever you're looking at the data that we were just looking at, they did some clarifications on how that should play into part of your plan. For example, when we used to have our phases and we were tied to the community spread rate, that would be how, when you would use that low, medium, and high. But since we've kind of gone away from using that as part of our e-learning system, we just kind of use that as a piece of information now. They also added guidance for interventions when clusters occur, and that's whenever you have several cases identified in groups. We already use that as part of our 10 and 20% rule whenever we close classrooms or schools and that kind of thing with our clusters. So whenever we look at DEHEC. Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask you one question?
Sure thing.
Will you go back and state again what the CDC recommended or didn't recommend about physical barriers?
They took out the recommendation, you know, where it used to be in their recommendation that you had to have physical barriers between everybody.
Okay, like a plexiglass.
Right, so they didn't, they just no longer say that they recommend those. They just took that recommendation out as part of that.
Okay.
Okay, so now, I'm glad you asked that because now, looking at the DEHEC, South Carolina DEHEC, so that was CDC.
Right.
So whenever you look at South Carolina DEHEC, plexiglass barriers in scenarios when students are close contact, that can help us whenever we are quarantining. So whenever we have the, whenever we have the physical barriers in place, we can utilize the three-foot rule or the three-feet rule. Whenever you're looking at, do we need to quarantine that student that may be at four feet? So if you do have the physical barrier and the mask at four feet, you do not have to quarantine that child. But if you don't have the physical barrier at four feet, you have to quarantine them up to six feet. So the barrier helps us keep our kids in the building. So it's really because of a lot of our rooms, we are not able to provide the six-feet distance between each child. So whenever we're putting those plexiglass dividers in, that helps us keep more of our kids in our building if there is a positive case in that classroom. Yes, sir?
Some of the classrooms that you might be able to maintain six feet, are you, are we backing away from the plexiglass? I've been, you and I have been in one room where it had plenty of room and had plexiglass everywhere. Are we allowing that?
You will see some classrooms that don't have the barriers up if there's a smaller group of kids. Some of them are kind of more installed into the desk where they have the clips and they may be taped down, or we have the bigger ones that are a little bit heavier to remove and that kind of stuff. So many of our rooms are kind of in and out with the numbers, so we don't necessarily take it out. But if there is a room that doesn't have a lot of space and you can keep those kids socially distanced, then they are removing those barriers in some cases. So are we changing anything? Like Dr. Thomas said earlier, we're not because of the mask mandate through Superintendent Spearmun, and also so that we can address the quarantining issue by utilizing the three-feet rule versus the six-feet rule in all those cases. We are not changing anything to our protocols currently. So also want to give you an update on our staff vaccination. We had two clinics that were held by Prisma Health and Self Regional. They were awesome partners to work with, and they were very welcoming to our staff, and they were very wonderful to work with, just, I can't say how great they were in general. Prisma, our one day that we had at the Ridge, we had 222 staff members go through that day. Self Regional, we had 80 on that Saturday. And we have approximately 100 others that we've kind of heard of that we have also vaccinated. We have not done a, did you get vaccinated survey? We feel like that's part of their health record. They can share it with us if they want to. We're not requiring them to provide us a vaccination card, a copy of that, unless they come in close contact with a student or a positive case that they would need to prove to us that they don't need to quarantine. So part of that deal is where we got guidance from the CDC. It says people who have been in close contact with someone who has COVID-19 do not have to quarantine if they are fully vaccinated or if they have recently had COVID-19. So whenever you hear the three-month rule based on if you've had COVID, you're basically covered for quarantine for three months because it is very unlikely that you will contract COVID again within those three months. If you have been fully vaccinated, which is two weeks after your last dose, which is your second dose or the single dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson, you are considered fully vaccinated. You then no longer have to quarantine. And both of those are with the stipulation of that you do not show symptoms. So if you start showing symptoms of COVID-like symptoms, you do have to quarantine, get retested, and so that you can prove that you're not positive. All right, we did do a student vaccination survey for those that are 16 and older. There is one vaccination that is allowable to be used for 16-year-olds and older. We have 961 students in the high school that are at that age. We sent an email to parents, posted on social media. We received 64 responses to that. We had 26 say yes, 24 to say no, and then you can see seven were undecided, seven had already received. So we have worked with one of our providers to say that they would be willing, but looking at 26, they said it would be just as easy if they would just make a call or contact through their registration process to get those in there. We did reach out to Clinton to see if they were interested. So they were going to do a survey too to see if there was kind of a feedback that we may want to do something together, but I have not heard back from them. Okay, you may have heard in the news recently that there is a bill passed, the Joint Resolution R-33 and S-704, where they are requiring five-day in-person classroom instruction mandate. That was just passed by the state. This piece that we're going to look at today is basically for this current school year and next school year that we must provide a five-day face-to-face option for parents. And we do that. We were one of those that kind of came on in October, November to phase that in for our parents, but there were still some to, till today, where there were still some schools that were not back face-to-face all five days. And so we did ask the clarification. I emailed the state to see if that impacted our e-learning days, if we had to go e-learning for a classroom or for a school based on the COVID numbers. And they said this does not impact a school's ability to close individual classrooms or the entire school if needed due to COVID-positive or close contacts. So we still have that authority based on the number of cases that we have in our building to do those kind of small closures if we have to based on either not being able to provide staff or if we have an outbreak in one of our buildings. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pennlin. This concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Now, we have Mr. Ed Murray for a policy reading.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Thomas, members of the board. You have before you tonight Policy GBGA for first reading. This is an update to our staff health policy that deals with the issue of the COVID-19 vaccination and its relationship to the required tuberculosis test. That's the primary change in this policy is that it allows for us to start a new employee without a tuberculosis test if they have recently had a COVID-19 vaccination. So there are a couple of other minor technical changes in the policy, but that's the primary basis for the change to this staff health policy. Again, this is first reading, so there's no action required by the board, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just for clarification purposes, the highlighted portion is the newly added material, and then the portion that's stricken through is what we're removing, and there's no other changes beyond that?
Yeah, the portion that's in red is an optional section that we're recommending. We don't include in that. And then the other portion where it says the exposure control plan is highlighted, that's just replacing the bloodborne pathogen title that used to be in there because it's a more encompassing title than just bloodborne pathogens for that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Thank you.
And thank you for your work here in District 55.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. I'm sorry.
Now we're up for our financial report. I know Mr. Lawless couldn't be with us tonight, so it's up to him, Mr. Murray, to take that one.
Yes, Madam Chair, we'll be sharing the financial report this evening. Each of you should have received a copy of the financial report for March 2021. Our balance with the Treasurer's Office as of the end of March was $5,5,426. This cash balance is significantly lower than where we were at this time last year, in addition to being lower than our trending balance for the current year. The district will soon be submitting information to the Department of Education for reimbursements for several major federal programs, which should alleviate the situation and provide for adequate cash flow. Our fiscal year-to-date general fund revenues for the first nine months were $36,739,114, which continues the trend of slightly outpacing the prior fiscal year. Our general fund expenditures for that same period were $36,803,706, which is also favorable compared to the prior year. The difference of $3,935,408 for the first nine weeks puts us a little over $1 million ahead of where we were at this point last year, which is good progress in our efforts to restore the district's general fund balance. Tax collections for the month of March were $810,794. Does anyone have any questions?
I think that's, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our meeting this evening, so we just need a motion to adjourn.
I so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Thank you, Mr. Rawl. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you for being here.